I'd like to call the June 15, 2017 City Council Meeting in Muscatine, Iowa, to order. Fran, roll call please.
Councilmember Spred.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Posado.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Raywall.
Present.
Six present and one absent, Your Honor. I'm sorry about that.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we would like to open up the City Council meeting by any comments coming from the citizens. Any comments that are currently not on the agenda? Please state your name and address.
Kelsey Brackett, 2817 Mulberry. Thank you, Council. Basically, I just had a couple of questions about the recent burn down at the transfer station and whether or not it's -- citizens were notified. I had a number of people contact me and ask me about the smoke and the size of the burn and that they were a little surprised and caught off guard by the excessiveness of it. Both citizens and some of the -- I talked to some of the businesses down in that area as well, and one of them, I walked into their lobby and it still smells. So, just had some curious if in the future we'd handle that differently if, you know, I obviously can't do anything different about this one, but...
A couple items. Press release did go out regarding the burn in advance. Public Works has been working with IDNR, actually recommended that we do the burn related to the storm damage and as the, probably the best mechanism to get rid of that much debris rather than hauling it out. If you haul it out, you're talking 50,000 at least or more to remove that debris and have it taken to a proper landfill. This was the recommended option in working with IDNR.
Okay.
And yes, there was a press release done in advance of the event and picked up.
Okay. I guess one of the...
The Journal picked it up as well.
Okay. I guess maybe one of the suggestions I'd make then in the future would be at least the businesses and homes that are right there in the immediate vicinity, some kind of other notification, either, you know, a sign posted near, like Sunset down there, or a little door knocking down at the businesses that are right next to that facility if it's going to be a burn that size. So, you know, like I said, it's, I think it was Sunday that it was started and one of the, you know, one of the offices I walked into, the second I walked in their door, the smell hit me, and I wasn't smelling it outside at that point. So, it's, you know, pretty intrusive. So, anyway.
Appreciate the input.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from citizens? Sherry?
I'm Sherry Leonard, 102 Grover Street, and today I'm still having the effects of the smoke, which is still coming up from down there, and I've been to the doctor twice. And it is still horrid out there as I left my house again today, and I've been to the doctor again, like I said, twice, and I've had people in the community saying the same thing to me in regards to this burn. I mean, I don't know how long you've all had for this permit to be initiated, but the tornado was on March 6th, and there's a lot of us in that area that already have enough problems with our health, and then we were polluted with that. And I just didn't think it's quite fair. The DNR seemed to think that possibly it could have been done not all at once and maybe a little at a time. And I understand it's not cost-effective, but it's pretty uncost-effective for me to go to the doctor too and have to spend that money to try to stay well. And today I'm still like, I feel like I have a bunch of elephants sitting on my chest trying to breathe, and I just think there should be a better way to address this. And I understood the use of shred, but I don't understand why the fumes are still coming up, and I'm, there's a lot of area down there to be burnt. And I really hope that there'll be a reconsideration for this because I can't afford to move. And I thank you.
Where are you located, ma'am?
I live at 102 Grover Street.
H- Sheen Grover.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thanks.
Is there any other comments from citizens? Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will no separate discussion of these items unless a City Council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on that agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes Items 6A and B, Items 8A through F, Item 11, Item 12, A and B, and tonight's bills, $1,997,462.46?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? opposed 2017 asphalt lay overlay project. The public hearing concerns the proposed 2017 asphalt overlay project. The Public Works Department has compiled a list of streets to be milled and overlaid with new asphalt during fiscal year 2017-18. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. Now's the time to public to comment. Is there any comments from the public?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 6-0. Resolution approving the plans and specs, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting the bid date for the 2017 asphalt overlay project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
I've got someone that does motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Tom. Tom and I were kind of in unison on the first motion.
You're going to second it, Bill?
I'll take the second. Maybe the fifth.
Is there any discussion at this time?
Yes. This won't even be let till mid-July, probably. Is that, why so late? If indeed we get better prices, if we try to get this done in January or February.
Why so late with the bid time or the construction?
The bid time.
We were, if you recall, I did the street prioritization matrix over the winter, so once that was approved by council or consensus by council, then we went forward and did the street list. So, it took us a little bit of time to get the streets measured, estimated, to put them out to bid. And we don't have money until July 1, so we can't build it until July 1, anyway.
That's the reason right there.
Fiscal year.
And we typically don't let this work until springtime, so we were probably a couple months, a month or two behind at the very most, but the money's not available till July.
Yeah, we can get bids out without having the money, so...
Correct. Yeah. And next time we'll work on that. I can do it sooner in the year. It's my first time.
Thank you.
Next year, you can't use that excuse. Use it as much as you can.
Any other discussion at this time?
No.
This is a roll call vote. Santos?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And myself as I. 6-0. Request to approve change order number four for the Muscatine Art Center HVAC replacement and windows improvement project. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to approve change order number four for the Muscatine Art Center HVAC replacement and windows improvement project. The areas of concrete at the Muscatine Art Center were damaged during the course of the project. Crawford Company has agreed to provide a decrease of $13,425 on the final project amount as compensation for that damage. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved. Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
Have the repairs been made yet?
No.
And...
Repairs have not yet been made. The repairs have not yet been made, but we do have an estimate for the project cost.
Do you have any idea when you might have those repairs finished?
I'm not sure that that's going to get done in the course of this fiscal year. It's really a project that falls under the Buildings and Grounds Department, and we have 75% towards the project, but not the full amount. And I don't really know the exact details of the timing of when they intend to do that, but I knew that it wouldn't happen in the course of trying to get this wrapped up.
Sidewalks are damaged, they're not unusable.
Yes, they're usable.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
There's damage during the project.
It's not a concern during the ice cream social, then. It's not a concern during the ice cream social?
No.
Oh.
No, no. They're in usable condition, but just worried about the longevity of that sidewalk and the walkways. And there were multiple projects that were taking place at the art center, so that's why Crawford went with 75% because there were other contractors on site as well.
Could we asphalt repair those?
No.
Concrete.
Yeah, they patched right over asphalt already, but concrete.
Got to look at it. We're not, no. I'd put, say no to that immediately.
We only do concrete.
She kind of architectural sidewalks anyway, aren't they, with the stone?
No, they're not our...
Yeah, there's some decorative finish around the edge.
You'll see. It's not in good condition.
Maybe we need to rip it all out.
Just take a look at it. I'm just saying, I went down there and I...
I'm not interested in putting asphalt in.
Well, if we're just going to leave it there, that's not the best option either.
We'll get it repaired. Now that we have at least a portion of the funds, we'll get it scheduled and repaired.
Okay.
Sorry, just to add a little clarification. So, the sidewalks in the parking lot were damaged by contractors driving over them during the course of construction. So, Building and Grounds will use the city contractor or get bids to repair that work. The deduction is basically Crawford's share of the pay, but instead of writing us cash, they just deduct it from this project, and we'll fix it out of Building and Grounds budget.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Further discussion? If not, it's a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes 6-0. Presented for City Council consideration is a resolution accepting completed work performed under the Muscatine Art Center HVAC replacement and windows replacement project and authorizing final payment to the contractor. The initial contract amount was $1.5 million, it's going to be $1,590,520. There were four order changes totaling $189,894.45, bringing the final contract amount to Staff is recommending City Council accept the completed work for this project and authorize final payment to Crawford Company. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Balancing a complicated system such as this is no small trick. And have we done tests and recorded results to be sure that you're getting exactly what you want in each room? Has that been codified?
We're working on it. So, we, the chillers, we were waiting for the chillers to be able to come online. They've been operational for just about the last two weeks, so I've been recording data for temperature and humidity. We have a little tweaking to do, but things are trending in a good condition, you know, in the way that we want them. So, I think at this time, it's, I'm confident that we'll be able to work with the system that we have. We may have, you know, some additional things that we need to address at a later time that are independent of this project. For example, in the winter, there was a little bit, to be able to get our humidity levels up to where we wanted for the Stanley Gallery, we started getting condensation on the windows, but that was before everything was fully operational. So, for now, and I had a conversation with Vic Amaro so earlier today, we're making tweaks in small increments and trying to determine exactly how to get it right in the range that we want. So, we're adjusting, but it's, I looked, I went back and looked at, you know, where we had been, and we've come a long ways with this. So, now it's just a matter of some tweaks.
So, there's still, the heating and humidity in the winter is still of question, and you're not completed with the testing of the air conditioning?
The chillers have been, they're online and they're, they've been tested and they're ready to go with them. They're working. What I'm talking about is, you're asking me, am I getting the readings that I want? And I have two weeks since, you know, they really put the chillers, that they were fully operational, so I have two weeks of data.
Yeah, that's, the contractor would like to have 100% of the money, but we don't have 100% of the results yet.
Yeah, and they're not getting 100% of the money. They've got another 30 days yet before this would be paid out, and certainly we wouldn't want to authorize that if we have other issues that remain outstanding.
But this would, we're not holding any money back after we okay this payment?
It says you've got 30, it's to be paid out in 30 days.
It is, okay. Excuse me, I missed that part. Great, you got 5%. Good. Thank you.
On other projects, they have, if I remember correctly, they have stood behind their work, the Public Safety Building. They're on it for a period of time after we paid to make sure that everything's...
Yeah.
In addition to, yeah. So, I'm comfortable with this.
Is there any other discussion at this time? Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
This is a roll call vote. Councilman Tom?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Myself as I. 6-0. Motion passes. Presented for City Council consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs and unpaid rental inspection fees to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisances, payment costs, and unpaid rental inspection fees to private properties. The nuisance abatement costs for snow, junk, and weed removal totaled $2,430.20, and rental inspection fee is a total of $900. The administrative fees are $775, and the assessment fees are $1,100.
$1,000.
It's going to be $1,100. The total fees being requested for assessment at this time totals $5,205.20. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one comment related to the, it's not necessarily the rental inspections, but nuisance abatement. I would, I'd like to see the residents walk across the street from where they live and then look at their house as if they're new to the neighborhood and see what improvements could be made. Maybe nothing, but see what your neighbors are looking at and then address those issues if there are any. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussions? If not, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Myself as I. Passes 6-0. Presented for City Council consideration is a resolution approving the final plant, plat for the J&amp;J subdivision. This 23.61 acre, one lot subdivision is located in the 2,600 block of Crimson Avenue and falls within the two-mile limit requiring City Council's approval. The proposed subdivision will facilitate the sale of farmland by giving the proposed lot fundage on a public street. Is there a motion to accept the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Tom?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bynum, aye, 6-0. Presented for City Council consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the River Valley Tank subdivision. This .36 acre, one lot subdivision is located in unincorporated Muscatine County but falls within the two-mile limit requiring City Council approval. The proposed subdivision would create a new .36 acre lot with the purpose of splitting off the LP tank from the remaining farmland. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Councilman Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Myself as I. Passes 6-0. Presented for City Council consideration is a resolution authorizing an application to the Department of Transportation for federal transit funding through the Low or No Emission Grant Program. A presentation on this grant funding opportunity was made at the June 8, 2017 in-depth meeting. If approved, the grant funding in addition to the local match would provide six CNG buses, CNG slow fill stations, maintenance facility upgrades, and workforce training. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Tom?
Aye.
Councilman Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob? Aye, 6-0. Motion carries. Presented for City Council consideration is a resolution seeking support and authorization to pursue a U.S. DOT Marine Time Highway Administration Grant. Staff is requesting City Council adopt this resolution for MARADA project planning grant for the design, engineering, and permitting for an intermodal container port on the Mississippi River on the city's southern border. The grant request is for $200,000 in federal funds and is contingent upon the city raising $50,000 in private funding. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Councilman Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bynum, yes. 6-0, motion carries. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to approve a solid waste and leach hauling contract. The current contract expires on June 30, 2017. One bid was received from JJJ Hauling/Brunz Excavating with a proposed price of $140 per load for solid waste hauling from the transfer station to the landfill and $170 per load for leach hauling from the landfill to the water pollution control plant. Staff is recommending the approval of the contract, which will be effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just have a question. Any idea why we only received one bid?
I second that question.
I don't know if we have, let Christie jump up here. We did include the 2012 comparison chart, so as you can see, this is well within the bids that we received at that time, other than the low bid with my current provider, who's the one responder in this case.
It's the million-dollar question. Why did we only get one bid? So, we sent out individual packets to five haulers. In 2012, we sent out individual packets to six haulers, and we also posted it on the website. So, not certain why we only got one bid. The fortunate thing is it's reasonable and well within the confines even of what we saw in 2012.
Christie, how many loads do we do per year?
Oh, good question. Forty, about 43,000 tons of waste. I don't know the load number in that solid waste. Leach eight, um... How many, John? 150 loads of leach eight a year? Yeah.
And on the, on the bid, it showed fuel prices. I think that they tend to move per gallon.
Right.
Did we pay taxes for fuel as well? I mean, because I thought we had a lower tax rate that when we buy fuel, Greg?
So, the hauler's providing his own fuel for his own vehicles.
That's what I'm asking, because I know that they leave their truck there, don't they?
The trailers belong to the city. The three... The three solid waste trailers belong to the city.
Okay.
The truck, the truck piece of it belongs to the hauler. The tanker belongs to the hauler and they have to only use that tanker for hauling leachate. That's required also in the contract.
Is there any other questions for Christie?
I can email you exact numbers tomorrow if you want number of loads.
I sent it to Greg earlier, that's why I wasn't sure. I thought you said that. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
You bet.
Further discussion at this time? If not, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes six zero. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to approve the elimination of parking on the north and south side of Sunset Drive from the intersection of Sunset Circle to a point 195 feet west. Based on the information received from the residents in that area and the traffic committee's investigation of the matter, staff is requesting City Council take action to remove the parking on Sunset Drive as recommended by the traffic committee. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
And I hear a second. Any discussion at this time?
I'm just concerned that this is going to increase the speed. Concerned that this is going to increase the speed on that section and so I'll be voting against this.
Any other discussion?
We'll have to wait and see how that operates and we'll see from there. I think I'd rather see it and get what the people that they want and then we'll go from there.
I think safety is a primary concern here. It's been said before.
Okay, we have a motion before us, first and second. Discussion has ceased. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Five to one, motion has passed. Greg, do you have any idea how long it will take us to remove parking?
Brian's indicating next week.
Thank you, Brian.
No guarantees.
He's new.
Right, right.
You can't punch holes in the ground without doing a locate.
Okay, next on the agenda is presented for City Council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for the 2017 paint striping project. Two bids were received for this project with only one meeting. The city spec, staff is recommending City Council authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Wykert Contracting of Ackley, Iowa in the amount of $60,623.07. There is a $60,000 budget for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We're, we're going to make sure the templates match what's there.
Yes, we've had that discussion.
Thank you.
Any, any other discussion at this time? If not, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes five, excuse me, six zero. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to approve the City of Muscatine's insurance renewal for fiscal year 2017-18. The primary package lines of coverage will be renewed with ICAP. There are no recommended changes to the city's coverage and the ICAP lines of coverage are within the budgeted amounts. The Insurance Committee is recommending the renewal of workman's comp coverage with Iowa Municipalities Workers Compensation Association. Because of a decrease in the experience modification rate, the premium for this coverage has been reduced by approximately $37,000. Staff is requesting City Council authorize AJG buying the insurance coverage as outlined in the attached executive summary. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
I've got a first and a second, any discussion? If not, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes six zero. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to reapprove Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement between the City of Muscatine and the Iowa Department of Transportation and the Non-Discrimination Assurances. These documents are required as part of the process for receiving federal and state funding for various IDOT projects. The policy was approved at the April 6, 2017 meeting, however, due to the removal of Mayor Brodessen, the document is, is being changed to allow faciliture by the city administrator. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six zero. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to approve asbestos abatement. Change orders one and two and the amendment to the IDNR agreement. The city has recently discovered that the asbestos continuing material, which is ACM, has been abated inside the T Street building. However, the roofing is unsafe and needs to be removed by certified as asbestos operator. Change order number one will be provided for a deduction of $3,500. However, change number two will require an increase of $27,300 for adjusting the scope of the work to include safe removal and disposal of the roof. Staff has negotiated a completion date with the contractor of June 30th, 2017. Staff is requesting that the City Council approve the change orders to the contract with Advanced Environmental Services and the amendment to the IDNR agreement for final removal of asbestos at the T Street building. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time?
So what caused the change order for number two?
Thank you. The first, we had a high winds event after the tornado. Almost said tomato. But after the tornado, a few weeks later, we had a high winds event that stopped us from completing the original design, which was getting up on roof and scraping the tar and asbestos-related roofing. Since then, we've had to regroup and figure out that that has to be taken down differently. And so therefore, we got a deduction from the original contract by 3,500. And we had to bring in, we had to organize the certified operators, the lined equipment, and dispose, final disposal of landfill properly. So that's the increase. We stay under 50,000, which this does. It's 42,000 or 44,000. That, um, total contract. Then 50% of that is paid for by the state and that's what the amendment for the state is as well.
The roof is unsafe for individuals to get out and...
They're getting it off of some sort of tool or some sort of...
Yes, we'll have to use equipment rather than manual labor.
What happened was, there's a tower on the T Street. Everybody's seen it for years and it had the Kent Feed signs on it, whatever. And that we-wad and fell down on this roof. Well, it made it so unsafe that humans can't get up on it.
Okay.
Is that a New England verb that we just heard?
Oops.
We-wa.
Well, cali-wanka and everything else, you know that.
So we'll have it done this next two weeks.
Yeah, actually, they're going to go in tomorrow, uh, not tomorrow. I think they'll probably start mobilizing tomorrow for, uh, for next week. You'll notice on the street side, since that street's closed technically anyway, we're going to have to take down a wall so that an excavator can get in and peel each of the layers of roofing off from the street side, but it'll be up almost into the building to do it. That's going to be peeling it all the way back to the scale house that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions for the gentlemen?
The roof has been removed from the Ice House building, is that correct?
No.
No.
No. The Ice House building is under a different track and I'll let Greg speak to that.
Right, so we, we're waiting one final approval from FHWA. Everything has been completed under the terms of the MOA and essentially, we're just waiting for FHWA to say, go, and then we can begin demolition of T Street Computer and Ice Building and any of the other associated ones that we can get out at the same time in addition to trying to do some salvage work to save, to save money as well. So, one final approval.
We're not going to give away that brick, are we?
Now, the plan is to deconstruct.
We've been talking about...
I know what I'm just thinking about, if the, if your potential of risks in that brick, we're probably not going to give that out like we did over on the stuff on the streets.
There's several ways that you can, that you can bid it out. You can, you can have a deduct and the salvage. You can, you could try to do the salvage first and then do the demolition and we'll be bringing that back to try and, we certainly want to try and salvage, there's several buildings. There's wood, there's the, the, there's the, uh...
The grain bins.
The grain bins as well. We think there's several salvage opportunities, so we'll, we'll construct the bid docs in such a way that we can try and save dollars in the process.
There's some salvage value to the silos. There's some salvage value to the elevators. Inside the buildings, there's a large grain bin that's probably more scrap than it is salvageable. But we have a couple of things, which is really important, is that, and I'm going to be working with Brian and his crew, is to deconstruct those bricks because they do have value and we have plenty of pallets and we're going to try to strap them down on pallets, you know, low so they're handable by forklift. And that will have value. But we're still going to end up with some rubble and all some stuff that isn't.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried, six zero. Presented for City Council consideration is a request to approve a roundabout as a preferred alternative for the Second Street Mulberry Avenue intersection. The current design of the Mississippi Drive corridor project is under construction. The design consultant recommends a roundabout intersection at this location due to the superior performance in level of service during daily peak traffic, during special events downtown that generate a lot of traffic into and out of the downtown area. Staff is recommending City Council take action to approve the roundabout intersection as the, as a preferred alternative to this intersection. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I got a few questions. So on your proposal, I saw in your picture that you had, I had, saw that you'd had a lot of data from the traffic. Did we do any, any data as far as pedestrians as well too?
Thank you, Counsel. Yes, we just managed to get those dug out just before meeting time, Santos. The, it's a, it's a day count for pedestrians, but at the intersection of Second and Mulberry, it's 125 pedestrians. At Second and Oak, it's 85 pedestrians. The only thing that I would do is I would condition that with the fact that when this design process started, it was prior to H&amp;I moving the chair plant down there. And if I remember, it was 260 or 280 jobs, they moved down there to that plant right on the corner. So we, we really do think that those pedestrian counts are, are significantly higher than that, but those are the counts that were taken as part of the traffic study.
In addition, we'll have the H&amp;I Community Center in Muscatine, Cliberry at that location as well.
Very true.
I mean, so that's another potential discussion piece from my point is just, you know, how much traffic are we going to have without any, any ways of yield lights or anything there that potentially has the crossways?
I think either Jim or, or Jim or Jim could certainly address pedestrian, pedestrian safety in roundabouts. I mean, they're, they're designed to be safer.
Yeah, but we don't have a stop sign, a stop light, we don't have...
Exactly.
Exactly.
And I'm saying so.
You got it.
And Santos, you, you said, you just said there are no stoplights at all at the, in a roundabout, correct? No pedestrians.
Jim off the top, Jim or Jim, do you have stats off the top of your head on pedestrian safety on roundabouts versus traditional?
It's been proven that... We have a little bit of graphic about pedestrian and vehicular safety in roundabouts. One of the big benefits of a roundabout for pedestrians is that you're only looking one direction for traffic as you're crossing and you have a pedestrian island, if you will, in between. So there's a lot less conflict points, a lot, you don't have to look for turning traffic coming towards you, you don't have to look for contr, indicating traffic against each other. So the, it actually is a very safe way to cross an intersection. It actually, it even pulls the, the crosswalk away from the intersection itself, so a motorist isn't looking at what's coming vehiculately, but also on a pedestrian level as well.
Was this from one of the previous presentations or so I can, I can send it out or is this a new one?
This is a graphic that we've just put together for roundabouts in general, just to give...
But I do have it, I can give it to you, so it can be distributed out.
Thank you.
Plus you're crossing a shorter distance.
Yeah, it's, it's half the distance that you're crossing.
Don't go away, Jim.
So how do we, how do we potentially protect those citizens that are crossing those intersections with no lights?
It's inherent in the design of roundabout that the pedestrians have a much higher safety factor because you are only crossing about 12 to 14 feet at a time and traffic is only coming in one direction. And then you have a pedestrian zone in the center that, an island.
I know, but this, this, this roundabout is basically twice as large as the other roundabout that we have, correct?
The crossing for pedestrians isn't any wider, travel lane wise?
The diameter of the roundabout is a little larger than...
The diameter is, but the pedestrian crossing movement isn't any...
How much larger the radius is it?
Off the top of my head, I think this is 130 foot radius.
It's like 20, 20 feet different?
Uh, yeah, I think the other one was about 110 at, on Cedar you're talking about.
Right. Right.
I thought it was a lot bigger.
Question. At Second Mulberry, does it have to be underground work, sewer, water, et cetera?
There does, especially in the electrical side of things. There's a transmission line that's going to be coming up Mulberry and down Second. So there's a big turn, if you will, with, with the transmission line electrical through that area.
About the sewer and water?
Sewer and water, I believe there's some, but off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what, I can certainly find out for you though.
Can you bring that? Can you put the other picture back up there?
What'd you say, Jim?
There's a substantial amount of storm show work there too. There's a 36 inch diameter...
diameter storm shower, I think, that goes over towards the tracks from this intersection. It helped solve some of the storm show problems that have been in that area.
So there, there has, it has to be torn up to put that in?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. And that's a lot of that $850,000 cost?
Uh, that $850 does not include the cost of the storm sewer under there.
Those utility, those utility costs would be equivalent on either alternative.
In addition?
Yes.
What's $850,000 for? We essentially leave it alone.
The $850,000 is new intersection, new turn lane, and new traffic signal.
Do you recall the, the price difference between the four-way intersection that you had in the previous presentation versus the roundabout?
About a $100,000 difference between-
Right.
-about and, and traditional intersection, signal intersection.
Replacement, right. And no signals?
That would be with signals. That would be with the cost of new signals.
Thank you.
Your memo says 850 for signalized and 700 for roundabout.
And if we essentially don't change any of it?
Well, we still have to put back new surfacing with the, putting in the electrical and storm sewer, that sort of thing.
Storm sewer's not in either of those totals.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be the third total.
The pavement has exceeded its useful life, hasn't it?
What's there?
It's at its end of life, yes.
It's, it's a, it's $150,000 cheaper to do the roundabout than it is to do the signalized intersection.
Jim's pulled up what the signalized intersection would look like at that area.
Let me, let me interject with one thing there, because I think it's important, and I, I did say a little bit in that memo about it, but I would like to reiterate it. Um, one of the things that, staying with that traditional intersection, and I understand the, the discussion of pluses and minuses of alternatives, but one of the things that we learned, uh, in the planning and design process was that H&amp;I Corp. was desirous of being able to come out of their loading docks and come along Second Street and, and turn right and go out Mulberry. Uh, the, that only happens at special occasions when you really have a lot of high water and flooding, but when that happens, they, they do need that, and if you try to stay within the framework of a traditional intersection, it's, it's very hard to accommodate that. And-
You don't need a roundabout to widen that.
But that roundabout does force you to widen it out, and that right turn lane becomes a simple thing. Plus, it also allows them to go all the way around it and back out Second Street if that's what they decide to do. It gives them more flexibility. I'm, I'm not saying that, that H&amp;I in any way, shape or form is requesting it, but I, I don't think I would err if I, if I did say that they're, are supportive of it. They like the idea.
Jim, I think the other important thing is, in addition to the cost savings, can you talk a little bit about the level of service? You're gonna be spending $850,000 to put in a traditional intersection, and your level of service ranges between C, D, and E versus A and B on a roundabout.
Uh, okay, I can, I can deal with that. Hopefully, maybe just back up just a little bit to give you guys a refresher on level of service, but traffic flow and the efficiency of flow of traffic, in the judgment of the feds when they set this all up, they did it like the grades you get when you were in school. A is best, D and F are terrible. Uh, free flow, no delay, A, B, C is about average. You, you start to see a little bit of delay. D, you see more delay, you stop and go traffic. And F is you're stopped more often than you're not. So those are the, just kind of general things, what level of service is about, and you're able to take all those inputs, do traffic generation, trip generation, distribute all that traffic out, and look at an intersection that's proposed and get an idea as to what level of service it would function at, at certain times. So you have the AM peak traffic and PM peak traffic, and a, a signalized intersection, the, you know, existing or a signalized intersection that would be similar to it, um, on the AM peak would have a level of service of C, PM peak would have a level of service of D, and the roundabouts would both function at level of service A. It handles those AM, PM peaks very well. Then Bolton Inc. also went through a process where they, you know, like an event on the riverfront, or a high generation of traffic in, and then a high generation of traffic right back out again, uh, in a few hours, et cetera, et cetera. But they looked at the level of service into the event in the downtown area, and a signalized intersection was level of service D, and the level of service out was E. And on the roundabout, it was, uh, on the level of service on the traffic in was B, and on the level of service of the traffic out it was A. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna handle those peak traffic loads better for the future.
And to address Santos' concern, it's your opinion that that design is safer than having traffic signals or flashing lights, or, I mean, this, this is the optimum design for what we're trying to do?
Um, and that other slide that was just up there, um, it's hiding here somewhere. You can pull that up. There, there were some statistics in that corner, and I think I am best served, rather than going from memory, is we will just pull that back up again. Because I think the thing that, that I, that if you look, it's hard to see, but on a right about in the middle, there's an 83%, but the rest of that doesn't. I mean, these are statistics that have been accrued for roundabouts. Um, 83% of the vehicles yield to pedestrians in a roundabout, because there are, there's, there's signage there, there's crosswalks striped, and bottom number that's a little smaller, to the bottom right, 7%, in a traditional intersection, even with the signalization, et cetera, et cetera, you get some right turns on reds. It, it's saying only 7% yield to pedestrians that are within those crosswalks. It's, it statistically is a safer intersection for pedestrians. The one thing I will say about roundabouts is that they are not built to put an attractive nuisance in the middle of it. I, I've said that before, but some, I've seen places where they get enamored with a roundabout, and they put something attractive that people want to go get their picture taken. And if people are crossing into that center and crossing back, that's not a good thing. I mean, when you get these crossing points way out on the edges of the legs, you know, where they're, they're marked on that, you only have direction of traffic from one direction you have to look for, and you only have about a 14-foot distance to go, instead of two lanes of traffic or three lanes of traffic to cross.
So if we put something in the center, it needs to be really ugly.
Nobody wants to-
Almost a new-
That would be, that would be my vote, yes. You wouldn't want your picture taken in.
Payment or bricks or something.
Um, that other, the other pic, I've got your, your picture up here, and I'm having a difficult time figuring out where, as a perspective, where Goodyear, I think I know where Goodyear Tire is, but I just want, or Great River Tire, or whatever the name of it is.
Top left-hand corner.
I think it's up over there.
So they're the top left. Mike-
Or, uh, top right on the picture.
Yes, 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 yes.
Which way you turning it?
So, I, I had a question on that same Great River Tire location. You have two exits.
Phil, on yours, this is Great River Tire here.
Well, that's what I thought.
No, no, it's this one.
So they actually-
So this is Great River.
Yeah, that's good. Bring it up.
Yeah, the one that's got two exits.
Because then you have a-
Explain the alley.
You have the alley access, which really isn't access per Goodyear, because it's an eight-feet difference.
Yes.
So, so they own, they have an in and an out only, then, in the same drive?
Yes.
Different than what they currently have?
Yes.
They cannot come out onto Second Street in the new layout.
Yeah.
Which I'm not saying is good or bad, it's just that, that's the way it works out.
Is the library gonna lose any parking lots?
I think it's mainly green space on the library side.
Um, yes. I believe there's actually gonna be a little bit more green space on the library side, but to get back to Goodyear, I think that's a business. Isn't that a Goodyear?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, yes, they have an entrance that goes straight south out of that parking lot. And if the concern of the council is that that may be shortchanging that business, I mean, we would be more than happy to visit with that business. We, I have talked with them a couple of different times. If they have serious heartburn about the fact that that they would be limited to one entrance, I, I think that final design could accommodate that easily.
The access to their property is only if they're coming, somebody's coming from the courthouse end on that, that side of Mulberry.
Right. I mean, if you're, if you're coming, if you're coming from the south off of downtown, the-
Yeah, you can't cross it, so if you're coming-
If you're coming from the south off of downtown, and you come into that intersection, and you want to get to the Goodyear, you gotta go a fairly convoluted route. You gotta go up somewhere, find somebody to turn around, and come back down again.
Right.
But if you have that other entrance on the south down there, you'd be able to just go around that roundabout and then turn right and go in the south entrance down there. So in final design, I, I would see absolutely no problem with putting a second entrance into that. And, and the alternatives that we've had for that intersection with the roundabout, one of them did show two entrances, and, and one of them did not show it. So, it, that, that's not, that is not a problem. That's just the sketch I chose to show.
Yeah, and, and it's giving, when you're coming into the downtown, with the, the landscaping and so forth, you're not going to see the, their, their building, or the library building, uh, than the upper part of it, because of the landscaping, and there's a lot more green space, and, and it should make it a little bit better. The, this is eliminating the garage and associated buildings.
Buildings.
Thank you. So-
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just think it'd be a good idea if you make sure that you at least talk, because Goodyear's the only, you've already, Han's already been quite aware of what's going on. Goodyear probably has been involved, but they, I think that, that's an issue that you might want to talk to them.
Absolutely. And, like I said, it's something we've already talked to them about. I just don't know that they've ever specifically put their foot down and said, "This is what we want," but we can approach them again and give them that as an option. We really can, and, and will.
Okay. Because it's limiting access. I have an issue when you're limiting access to people's residences or businesses, like on the-
Understood.
That's, I mean, if you look at it, even if you put one down at the bottom, you're gonna be coming right out of the roundabout, turning right in, and then even if that was an exit on top, you're gonna come right out, come right out of their, their building and then go right into the roundabout. So, that's gonna be difficult for that Goodyear Tire group. But, yeah, if you can follow up with them, that would be good.
We will. Um, again, this is conceptual. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if that driveway that shows going into their parking lot might not be a little farther away from the roundabout in final design to get a little bit more space there. I mean, that, that driveway could literally come in there just about anywhere along that thing. So, we absolutely can accommodate that.
When will you, will you have the final drawing?
Who, like, final design?
Correct.
Man, that's a complicated question, Rob.
Well, will it be this year?
Um, I would hope, and this all, I, I, honest to goodness, I don't want to launch into this, but I'm gonna give it just a quick little shot and hope we all hit on the same point. Um, as you guys are aware, there is the quote-unquote revision to the EA. Now, we aren't doing anything final. We aren't spending any money till we know that works how we want it to work. And if tonight, the council does decide to adopt this as their preferred alternative, our environmental consultant feels that that does strengthen our argument a little bit. It's not one of a group of preferred alternatives, it is the preferred alternative for the city. But with that, um, late November, maybe even into this year, the environmental stuff could be anticipated to be done, and then at that point in time, we start final design, we could still roll it into next year's construction.
So if there's something that pops up in this EA that makes this project $300,000 higher-
Right. We'll be back.
Or, or, or even $50,000 higher, we're, then, we're gonna hear this again. This is not final, 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 the, the roundabouts going in at all cost.
No, I would never do that, no.
Okay.
If you recall-
I would never do that.
If you recall during the first initial EA, um, process that was done several years ago, when Steve was still on board, the council had to designate preferred options.
Right.
And, you know, that, that's what we're really asking to do tonight, is designate the preferred option as part of the environmental process, and, and we would, uh, once we hear the final word on the EA, then we would come back and begin final design. And if there's any issues that come up, we'll certainly be back to council.
Little tidbit that backs up just a little bit, but information. Uh, that same email I got today from Mike Fisher at Impact 7G, said that he anticipated that the Pirtan Ice would be ready for demo July 1. Do you think they're gonna get the thumbs up from-
FHWA.
The state archaeologist office?
FHWA, still.
FHWA, there we go.
Well, this was preferred by the citizens that did attend the, the public, um, with the clickers and-
Yes, it was.
Yes, yes. I mean, yes. I'll leave it there. Yes.
Realizing, of course, that it wasn't every citizen or anything like that, but-
It wasn't unanimous. How about that?
-ones that chose to come.
Yeah.
Felt like every citizen was there.
So you-
Well-attended meetings.
Yes.
The entry centerpiece that you mentioned to make sure that it's not anything really everybody wants to take a picture with, but could we do something that maybe has a light in there?
I didn't hear that.
Sometimes these lights or clocks or vegetation, what, what, you know, potential for, for the centerpiece so that it's not an attractive nuisance. You, you've seen lights or, or clocks and, or-
The only reason why.
In this case, you've got vegetation. I can't really tell what's in the middle there.
Yeah.
The goal's to have something aesthetically pleasing at a vehicular scale, not a pedestrian level. So, what we'd do if, if we want something aesthetic in the middle, would be to, to design something that is best viewed from a car, or from entryway, scale appropriate for somebody that's in a, in a car passing by, not something that you go up and, and, you know, read text at the base, that sort of thing.
And I'm good with that. I'm just requesting that if, if we're at least within distance that we can have a, a good few candle light type deals, where we can have a pedestrian area where it's still lit well.
Yep.
You know, if it's a 10 candles, or the 10, you know, 100 candle lights, you know, how much, what, what percentage of-
The, uh, roundabouts in general are lit to a higher level than a typical roadway, and that's what we would, we would prefer in this option.
As long as it's still creating a safe environment, that's where I'm gonna be at. So I'm not gonna be opposed to it. It's just more around just having that understanding that the pedestrian crossings are gonna be safer.
We wanna portray that the center is a no man's land. We don't want anybody out.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm not getting into the design of your, I'm just thinking, if you're not, I don't see any lights, and if that's the only area where I know I can put something lights in there, that's what I was asking. If not, then look for somewhere else, if it's on the sidewalks or somewhere.
I don't recall. Was it nine or 12 lights? I'm trying, I'm trying to recall the number of, of lights that was in there, but it is significantly more.
It, it is, yep, because we try to light it uniformly into a higher level. I think, roughly nine lights.
Nine, yep.
And they minimize spillage out on the adjacent properties?
Yeah, the lights that we like to use are dark skies compliant, so there's not a lot of light trespass and not, not a lot of glare.
I just don't want it to look Google Maps. It looks like there's this big ball of fire there in the corner.
Further questions?
He's got gas. He could, he could light it up.
Further questions?
Oh, one, one last one. All the greenery I see out there is all taken care of by the adjacent home, owner, not Parks and Rec.
Other than the library side?
But, that's, yeah, I understand that. That's city staff, but in the center, probably would be minimal plantings.
Would be, we wouldn't do lawn typically and something like that either, that you have them on a weekly basis.
Low maintenance.
You might remember that when H&amp;I gave us the, the library building, that there was a covenant that, that if we didn't care for it to their specs, they were gonna do it, or something to that.
that effect.
They'll do it and bill us.
I believe, I believe we actually contracted for the, for the tree, for the tree, budgeted to contract for the trees and the bark work. Public Works is taking care of the, the mowing, Parks and Rec and the snow removal inside. Parks and Rec is doing the sidewalk on the out, on the exterior. So there's a, it's a team effort.
Just, we only have so much staff.
Yes.
Got to be...
We're eliminating one of the buildings, right?
Buildings and ground budget and Parks and Rec budget.
We're eliminating a building, right?
Two.
Two?
North, I would call it the northeast corner.
The one garage, it's labeled garage.
That brown one, I think, that it looks like, that's what I thought I saw.
The one that they play baseball in?
No, I don't think they do that.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I saw a bunch of trucks.
Used for storage.
Right.
They did play, they did that one time.
Did they really?
Yes.
They played baseball in there?
They would have batting cages.
Practice.
Batting cages and nets and stuff. It's a big building.
Okay, that's all I need to, thank you.
Probably on the historic register too, we'll probably have to pay to get that.
Any other questions? Do the discussion cease? Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Five to one, motion carried. Presented for the city council consideration is a request from the Canadian Pacific Railroad for the closure of Dick Drake Way. The railroad crossing on Dick Drake Way has been in need of maintenance for many years. The railroad has requested this closure to begin June 26 to allow for maintenance of the crossing. Crossing will be for approximately one week, actual closing. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The discussion at this time?
How long is that? Going to be just a one week for sure, or do we, that's just what they've estimated? Okay. That's all I need.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried, six-zero. Next on the agenda is item Q. Would you like to take the scan, sir?
I'll just stay right here, but you do have a memo in front of you that discusses the process. Once, once there is a vacancy, the council needs to decide how to fill that vacancy. The memo talks about basically the two options, appointment and special election. The dates, the notices that are involved in the process, the deadline of July 10 for council to take action if it's going to be appointment versus special election. There are two 14-day periods where the public can petition if the council does choose to appoint. Some of the dates that I would like to point out in the memo, again, July 10 is his last date an appointment can be made, July 6 is our last regular meeting prior to July 10. July 1 would be the publication deadline as well. There's some additional information in there regarding the special election and eligibility, those ultimately, I believe, are determined by the county. And the number of residents required for a special election. So this kind of lays out the timeframes and dates for both routes. And the deadline is sneaking up on us, July 10 for council action. And so I have a few questions, I guess, to put forth to council and start thinking about or discussion. First question is obviously, you need to decide between a special election and appointment. And if it's special election, that notice would be proffered to the county and they would take it from that point. Appointment process, council would need to make some decisions on how to move forward with appointment, take applications, how the review is going to take place, do you use the nominating committee, does council as a whole do that? There is some potential to review applications in closed sessions and/or use some other process. And if you are going to take applications, we'll have to come up with some deadlines and some dates to get that information before the council or the nominating committee. So, wanted to throw this out for some general information, those dates are sneaking up on us and council will need to make some decisions and let me know how to proceed. And we also, so we want to get information out to the public and make them aware of the process.
So there isn't any, any provision in the code that's allow the mayor pro tem to...
That's our understanding correct?
Continue. So if we decided to appoint the current mayor pro tem as mayor, then we would have to...
You'd have a vacant council seat.
That's okay.
That would need to get filled by when, another 60 days?
Vacancy provisions would be the same for the...
Although we'd have 60 days to point that one.
It'd be the same, same, same process. Of course, you're also inching closer to the, to the regular election, which is also a factor in, or should be, something for you to consider in your, in your thought process. And closer we inch towards the general election, you know, as it makes sense. At this point, I'd just really like to open it up for discussion and try and get some direction from council, because there is some deadlines approaching. And if there's some, if there's a consensus on moving forward in one direction or other, this would day, apologize, what day is? It's June 15, this is our last meeting in June. You have a meeting in June, July 6. You can also have special meetings, the nominating committee can meet as well. And if you're going to take applications, we'll certainly want to get those out to the public as soon as possible, so.
So we would need to actually take action on the 6th to appoint someone?
Well, you could set a special meeting.
Or set a special meeting.
Yes.
You could have a special meeting on the 10th, the way I'm reading this.
Yeah.
That's the last thing.
Okay.
My preference would be to have an appointment. We ought to take applications and get that news out ASAP and have the nominating committee do the nominations.
Nominating committee with the mayor pro tem acting as mayor.
Yes.
And then the two at large.
And under that setup, the existing mayor pro tem could be one of the...
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor pro tem assumes the duties of the mayor in the mayor's absence.
Then we have to go through finding someone for his chair that he wants to run for in November.
But it still could be.
Could be, yeah.
Could be an applicant, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, given the close proximity of the November general election, I'm not interested in recommending that we spend taxpayer dollars on a special election now. So I would prefer to appoint and...
Well, it says in, for example, it says if it's too close to hold a special election, the county auditor can decide not to hold a special election within, within, if it's within three months of a general election, which, that's out of our hands.
If I remember correctly, the number of about $8,000 was thrown around for the cost of a special election.
Correct.
So, I'm not, I mean, I'm not interested in spending eight, $8,000 to $10,000 to have a special election. So I think the appointment process would be the best situation if we need to get the candidates, people that are interested, to sign up, whatever, let's get it going.
Yep. The, and just to be clear, the appointment ends following the general election, not at the end of the year, just to be clear.
Oh, really?
It's the state code.
So, who does the November, the rest of the November and...
Whoever's elected.
Who's ever elected, they step, oh, okay.
Right. Right, I believe, yes.
Say that again, explain that to me again.
The appointment is effective through the general, through the general election, upon the general election, whoever would win the election, the general election would take over immediately, rather than...
Oh, okay.
Right after the vague term.
November 3 or November 8, whatever it is, they automatically are there, instead of like...
The term is, is from the appointment to the, through the general election.
I see.
That's interesting, I didn't know that. Not that I should. Okay, anything else?
I've got a potential action item, is that, is that the, if that's the direction council like to proceed, I do have the potential action item on here tonight.
Get her, get her going. I move.
Is there, did I hear a motion?
Yep. So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I did, but it doesn't matter.
My second.
So it's Phil and Mike.
Can all, all of those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, six-zero. Greg, is there anything else?
I have nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Mike?
Nothing, thank you.
Phil?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Scott?
I have nothing, thank you.
Santos?
I just have one last question for Brian briefly. You mentioned last week a potential about opening up Fourth Street. When will we be having that street open and will it be open before the 4th of July?
We met with the contractor today during our weekly construction meeting. He anticipates being out of that area by the end of next week, so...
By the end of next week?
By the end of next week, so by next weekend, hopefully, that roadway will be open, once he is done with all of his cleanup. And then the public works will come through and sweep the street really well, and then we'll take the barricades down and open it up. So hopefully, hopefully by Friday, or work, work week next week, it'll be open, which is, right now, it's about a week ahead of schedule. So, it definitely will be open before the 4th of July, but we're hoping by the end of next week as well, so.
We stopped using indefinitely guarantees with street projects, I think.
Did I say definitely? No, sorry.
Brian, could you tell us how the hotel's coming along at this time?
The hotel? I cannot tell you exactly how the hotel is coming along at this time. I believe that it is progressing on schedule, but I honestly, I don't know.
It's really not our concern.
Yeah, that's why I don't know.
Greg? Yeah, do you have any comments on the progression of the hotel?
I haven't had a recent update from, from the hotel, no. I mean, we're not, I mean, we stay in contact with the hotel related to the Mississippi Drive project, of course, in Chestnut and moving forward, but, and have those, those meetings on a pretty regular basis, but it's a private project, I don't have a current status update, no.
Thank you.
I'm good. Mayor?
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Do I have a motion for German?
So moved.
Motion for German.